PM City Council Meeting, all council members are present. And we'll begin our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair White.
Stand at your aim. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. We have quite a few visitors here today. We'll begin with a, our, next up, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any acknowledgements from the council? All right. Okay. We will first hear from Mayor Nadolsky. Appointment and, or see, report from his, man, I am struggling today. I don't know what it is. Anyway, appointment of Community and Economic Development Director, consideration of the appointment of Jared Johnson as a Community Economic Development Director. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I have a speech planned. But if you'll excuse me for one minute, I have a small change because I walked in the room today, and frankly, I wasn't in the best mood until I walked into the room today. How about that for transparency? It's because of the employees that were in the room that I felt instantly buoyed. I feel that way every day when I come to work here, every day. I have the honor of being surrounded by incredible people. We are only as good as those we are surrounded by. And I'm happy to say that I'm surrounded by the best. I came to you almost 100 days ago, and I presented to you and to Ogden my blueprint for a strong 100 days together. In that blueprint, I shared my vision for Ogden, and I want to share it again briefly before I begin my nomination for Jared Johnson for Economic Development Director. My vision for Ogden builds on our history, culture, and ethos to foster the health and wellness of our people and create a physical, social, political, cultural, and economic environment that creates opportunities for all of our people to achieve their greatest potential. It is my expectation that our staff and residents achieve their potential through their own commitment and hard work, while also having the support of their friends, their colleagues, neighbors, family, city staff, and community partners along the way. Central to this vision is a city administration that is not just working on behalf of the people, but is dedicated to their service. We, not me, we envision a community of people and partners that are hungry to invest in their own growth and in the prosperity of one another. To achieve this vision, we must create and nurture unprecedented partnerships between our staff, residents, local, state, and federal elected officials, our community of partners, anchor institutions, stakeholders, and service providers. Through collaborative efforts, we will move beyond the confines of partisan politics to set a tone of community dedicated to lifting one another. We will prioritize community engagement and communication, connect all people from all socioeconomic backgrounds with opportunities for growth. Our focus will be on fiscally responsible and sustainable economic development that supports small businesses, job creation, workforce training, as well as attainable and stable housing and homeownership opportunities. We'll emphasize opportunities for parks, recreation, and community health, especially for our youth, ensuring the safety of our city, including schools, neighborhoods, and places of worship, which will remain a top priority. We are committed to strengthening our city's infrastructure, laying a solid foundation that supports and enhances every aspect of our citizens' lives. And if you think I can execute on that vision by myself, you're wrong. And if we as a group of elected officials think that we can do it by ourselves, we're wrong. We all know that. We need good people around us. We need good people in every position, and we need those people to be surrounding one another in the work that they do every single day. That's the culture of collaboration that we've worked to establish in this building. It's the work that continues every single day, and it's the work that makes me the most proud and gives me the most fulfillment. The same day that I shared my 100-day plan, I also expressed what I wanted to emphasize as our shared values, starting with integrity. Integrity is at the heart of truth and transparency and trust, not only one another, but from the public. And I made a commitment that I will be making decisions as your mayor based on these shared values. I present to you Jared Johnson, a man of impeccable integrity, incredible integrity, a man that these employees all believe in for that exact reason. Trust. Trust is a factor that we can't take for granted. It's something that we create and we earn. It's something that Jared Johnson has earned in his more than 20 years of experience in economic development. Transparency. I came to you and told you what decisions I'd make and what values I'd reflect. I did it almost 100 days ago. Here I am today in full transparency, offering Jared Johnson as my nominee for Economic Development Director. Growth mindset. Jared Johnson's a man that's hungry for growth. He told me, Mayor, I'm ready. I can do this. I'll need help. We'll all need help. Nobody has all the answers. That's never been the intent. Never will it be the case. But Jared Johnson's a man that I've found will find those answers. He doesn't just find the answers out of nowhere. He often finds them with and through and along with others. Service. Jared Johnson's a man that has committed his life to service. A life of service to God, a life of service to one another. Jared Johnson's integrity is rooted in his selfless service to others. It's something that I admire most deeply about him. Collaboration. Jared does nothing alone. He always does it with others. And finally, humility. When I sat in your seat, I didn't know Jared Johnson very well. I'll admit it. I knew who he was. I knew him to be a quiet man. A man that didn't take credit for things that he should, things that he did, things that he earned. But that's one of the things I respect most about him is his humility. He doesn't need credit for the things that are done. He only wants to see impact, and he's most fulfilled when he sees that impact happening with, through, and for others. I want to read to you what I wrote in my 100-day plan about humility. It's important that we understand that effective governance requires a modest and unpretentious approach, acknowledging our limitations and being open to learning from others. Humility is a guiding principle in my leadership and community interactions as mayor. I will reinforce this value and demonstrate that we must not be driven by arrogance or a need for validation. Rather, we must be motivated by a commitment to collaboration, a willingness to receive and act on feedback, and a readiness to adapt and improve. We must balance our strengths and weaknesses and foster an attitude of respect toward one another and a willingness to embrace diverse perspectives. I stand here today with humility and with pride in my nomination of Jared Johnson as the next executive, next director of Community and Economic Development. I ask that you give Jared a fair shot. I understand what it's like to be in your position. I've been through advice and consent on your side. I don't like lis, I don't like listening to myself. I know what it's like not to know the staff. I also know what it's like to work in an environment where you're not allowed to know the staff, and it's not helpful. So when I took this position, I knew that I had hard decisions to make. And when I made the decision to ask Jared to step in as acting director, at that time, I didn't know him well. I had sure heard a lot of good things about him, though, and I wanted to know him well. And that gave me the opportunity for almost three months now to know the man and to understand the man, not just in passing, not just in hallways, not just when times are easy, but when things are really hard. I've seen how he interacts around the table in our directors' meetings. I've seen how he has and garners respect of others around him. I've seen how he leans on the input of others. I've seen how he brings collaboration for this department to the entire city, and I've seen all of his peers lean in to help him succeed, just as he has leaned in to help them. I've seen our leadership team become one with Jared at the table. I've seen our directors' willingness to run through walls for him, not just for Ogden, not just for economic development, not just for the outcome of a project, but for Jared. They feel that way because they believe in him. And I'm here to tell you that I believe in him the same way now, too, because I've had those lived experiences. I relied on Jared Johnson when it got really hard, and it's been hard. This has been the hardest job I've ever had. It's also the most fulfilling job I've ever had. It's because of all of these people, including Jared Johnson. I thank you for this opportunity to nominate Jared tonight. I ask you for your open mind and your open ear, for your willingness to hear from others about Jared, to think about our future different than it has been in the past, but to envision how great things can be, and to recognize that Jared is the man that can help us build the vision that we have. As city leaders, it's our job to bring vision and to listen to the city and to the community of residents who give us their input on what this city can be and will be. And it's our job collectively as elective leaders and as staff to build that vision. And I'm happy to say that Jared is a man that builds. He's a man that finishes. He's got years of experience as a builder and in economic development, not just in Ogden, but in Brigham City. He's got connections throughout industry and construction and in economic development. People that I have talked to, and it is many, long before I made this decision to nominate him before you tonight, told me all of the same things that I have experienced for myself. You'll hear from some of them tonight. You've already heard from some of them via email, from phone calls, from personal conversations. Jared Johnson is a good man, and I give, and I will step aside and let you finish your process, but I thank you in advance for your willingness to listen and for giving Jared Johnson a fair shake and a fair opportunity to serve. God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Nadolsky. Appreciate that. And at this time, we'll, we'll accept public input on this nomination or this appointment. And as you're, as you're coming up, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and limit your remarks to three minutes, just as a reminder that there are, there are ways to reach out to us. We've received emails, quite a few emails, phone calls, and things like that. So our information's out there. We're, we are eager to hear from you. So if you're online, you can raise your hand. If you're in the Zoom meeting, or you can, if you're on the phone, star six to raise your hand. If it's, if it's not star six, it's star nine. So try one of those two. But yeah, we'll turn the time over if you've got, if you've got, if you'd like to come up to the podium and, and do that.
Good evening, council members. My name is Adam Hughes, and I represent the Lotus Company. And I'm here to provide public comment on the appointment of Jared Johnson as Director of Community and Economic Development. Our interactions with Mr. Johnson have been nothing but positive, as displayed by his actions. Mr. Johnson values teamwork and collaboration and has demonstrated a commitment to soliciting input from and building consensus with both internal and external stakeholders to ensure alignment with city policies and plans. We have found this approach to be invaluable in facilitating open, honest, and transparent communication. Mr. Johnson addresses problems head-on and practically, one step at a time. He is not one to get stuck on big-picture ideals using a decision-making framework based on realistic, real-world circumstances. For example, when I questioned the city requirement of building ground floor retail in one of our projects, Mr. Johnson asked that we provide the data that supports our argument. We spent the next few days performing a rigorous analysis of the market and existing supply. Now, this is an ongoing discussion between us, but regardless of whatever the outcome, whether in our favor or not, as to be determined by this body, this is a logical system of information gathering that can only benefit city leaders in the decision-making process. We welcome this approach in facilitating thoughtful and informed debate. I am a former certified economic developer, having received the C ECD designation a number of years ago from the International Economic Development Council before transitioning into my current role at Lotus. While personalities and approaches may vary, I can attest that Mr. Johnson has demonstrated the professional values, integrity, and high moral character demanded of the economic development profession and this critical role in the city. Lastly, I believe Mr. Johnson's pragmatic, candid, and collaborative approach instills trust. And if you were to approve this appointment, it will allow the City of Ogden to amplify the level of investment and creation in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stephanie Russell. I am Lieber County's Economic Development Director and Government Relations Liaison. I am here tonight representing our commission, as well as our economic development and our community development departments. The commissioners wanted me to convey to you that they are very excited about the potential of Mr. Jared Johnson being appointed as the new Economic and Community Development Director. And myself, as well as Sean Wilkinson, are also very excited about the potential for working with Mr. Johnson. We've had some recent interactions with Mr. Johnson and his team, and when we heard that this was a possibility, we all convened together, the commission, as well as economic development and community development, to rally our support for this nomination. So we just wanted to emphasize that we would look forward to working with Mr. Johnson and his team and, and having more, of more of a collaborative approach to working with Ogden City. That would include meeting on a week, on a, on a monthly basis and, and doing some partnership projects together as well. So I just wanted to convey that information to you, just taking into consideration that the county is very supportive of this potential nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, I'm Steve Jones. I'm an Ogden, Ogden citizen, and I just would like to encourage you to ratify this nomination. I implore you to look towards this future, look at what we can accomplish by working together, and let's get Ogden moving forward again. And I'm going to be honest with you, I had never worked with Jared Johnson at all. My comments are really based on what I've heard from our mayor, knowing that he does a very, very good job at vetting everything that he does, and that he is, something he didn't say in his talk earlier, is that I know he also holds everyone accountable for what they commit to do. And I know that he would not nominate Jared or anyone else if he didn't thoroughly believe that that person was the right person at the right time to do the job. So I implore you, let's get on with things. Let's get Ogden underway again. Let's make us all successful. So please, you know, ratify this nomination and give us that opportunity to move forward and to move on to the next thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Bramwell, and I'm nobody important. I'm just a property owner in Ogden City. And I would like to welcome, I don't even know who Mr. Johnson is. Which one of you? Welcome, Mr. Johnson. I'm, I'm assuming that you'll be, these fine people will allow you to have this position. And I will support you because I trust the mayor. And I, I think the mayor had very good things to say about you, and so I want you to be successful, and I want Ogden to be successful. I want Ogden to be great again. But one question I have for you, and I want you to think about it, and you, and all of you, everyone in this room, at what point does the collaboration begin? Does the collaboration begin after the long-term property owners have been forced out of their property and the new developer has somehow acquired that property? Is that the point at the, when the collaboration begins? Or should the property owners and taxpayers of Ogden be included in that collaboration? Please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Chris Trumaya, Syracuse resident, but employee with Ogden City, proud employee with Ogden City. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to support Jared Johnson and to support all of you and to support the citizens here in Ogden City. And I get to, I get to be in conversation with a lot of them each and every day. And as Teresa had just mentioned, before this meeting, I, I had an opportunity to spend about 20 minutes with her. And she brings up a very good point about collaboration. And Jared is your man. Jared brings up collaboration when it's needed, and that's at the beginning. He is very proficient at that, and he's taught us that. He's taught his leadership staff. He's taught to all different levels when it's important to discuss the different elements. We've seen it. And when it comes to each and every development that is going on, we will see, and we will continue to see, when he involves certain staffs involved in the, in developments. For example, engineering. Engineering does not need to be brought into a project development at the end. They are critical to the infrastructure values of each and every development, and it is critical that they be involved. Our citizens are involved in their communications. There's a couple of things I wanted to share about Jared, that he has the perfect time to be hands-on, and he has the perfect time to be hands-off. You don't find that too often in somebody. He is the perfect leader. He leads by example, his expectations and his accountability. I get to see that. I'm in his office a lot, and people will tell you that. And it's not always good. But I hold myself accountable to those same things that he brings up. He's patient. He's a teacher. He guides each and every one of us if we come through our shortfalls. He guides us through those and teaches us to be a stronger individual. He's the quietest person in the room, until he's not. When he needs to speak up, that's the time to speak up, just like it is all of our responsibilities. He's a perfect salesman, and a rare one, because he's honest. He's very transparent. We get to see that each and every day. Wonder Block. He's brought those final touches to an end so we can start to see those developments come through. His hands-on involvement with it comes at a perfect time where he's able to, to be able to save the city money where it's proposed and where it's needed. He's changed code enforcement to code services, and I get to see, be the recipient of that, and our citizens. Thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Chair, Council, Kevin Brown, Fire Marshal for Ogden City and also 20-year resident. Unfortunately, my words probably aren't going to seem original now because they've all been repeated before I even said them. Thank you for giving me a minute to speak about Jared Johnson and his appointment. I've had the opportunity to work closely with Jared since he started with the city back in 2015. In his role as Building Services Manager, we often collaborated on permits, new construction, implementation of codes, safety-related issues, business licenses, many other functions. Also have frequent opportunities to work with him in his current role of Deputy Director of CED. I appreciate, appreciate the relationship we have and the open line of communication that we enjoy. I believe that these relationships lead to good outcomes for Ogden, Ogden City. In almost 10 years of working with Jared, I've found him to be honest, collaborative, communicative, and even-tempered, which you've heard. I've seen him defuse tense situations in meetings and also motivate people to act. He seems to have a knack for staying quiet when appropriate and speaking out when necessary. The words "team player" get used frequently to describe people, but Jared embodies that. I believe that Jared is hardworking, experienced, and driven, and I fully endorse him for the position of Director of CED. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin.
Council Chair and Council Members, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words on this matter. Mike Matthew, proud resident of Ogden City, 1860 Wasatch Drive, and fortunately, the pleasure of being your fire chief. I've had the luxury of working with a number of Community and Economic Development Directors throughout my career, and all of them have special traits, talents that have brought to the table, and, and they're all contributing to the best outcome for Ogden City. One of the things I noticed with Jared that hasn't really been said a whole lot tonight is that the mayor mentioned humility, and that, that is a very significant characteristic of him. And one of the things that I've noticed when I promote people in the fire department, I look for potential, and I think and hope that you would look for that tonight, is that none of us come into these positions ready and prepared, completely capable of, of serving and doing everything that we need to do in these positions. We need to learn a little bit along the way. We need to learn from colleagues, peers, people around us to help us develop and become who we have the potential of becoming. And that's what I wanted to mention. I think Jared has a heck of a lot of potential, because one of the things I really respect about Jared is the honesty, the transparency. I've even heard him say this, "I don't know," a handful of times. I very much appreciate that, because that translates to that he's vulnerable and he's, and he's humble, and he's willing to learn. And that generates collaboration. That generates the desire to want to work with someone, because they're saying, hey, I might need your help. And so as a peer, a fellow director, I highly recommend Jared for this position, because so far, the time I've had the pleasure of working with him, he's been very collaborative, very team-oriented. I had my very first meeting with a number of his staff with a situation that may have affected the fire department at the initial meeting. I didn't find out about it afterwards. I was there at the initial meeting, and so was Kevin, our Fire Marshal. And I very much appreciated that. And so that's, that's a tribute to his desire to want to work with others. We interact on a number of things with the airport and other areas of the city that you wouldn't think the fire department is impacted by Community and Economic Development, and he's always there, willing to help and work with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Hi, Joe Simpson with Planning Division. And I've had the great pleasure to work with Jared since he started. And I just want to be real brief and just say, he is the right man for the job, the right person for the job. And it's been a great pleasure for me to be able to work with him. I will say, he is, his, the best parts about Jared is, is that he is, he is kind, and he cares about everything he does. He cares about the people that he works with. And he communicates very, very well. And he wants to connect all the staff, all the departments together and to have collaboration. I've felt that, and I've seen that. And I'm just grateful and honored to have the ability to work with him and look forward to many years to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, Chairman and Council. My name's Brandon Boytston. I'm the Lead Building Inspector for the City of Ogden. Grateful to just take a couple of minutes and share some thoughts on Jared. I've had the opportunity to work with him since he started with Ogden City. You know, one thing about Jared is he's, he's a true leader. He, he leads by example. You know, I know there's several of us that have gone to Jared for, for help and assistance and guidance on, on different projects. And, you know, if Jared doesn't know the answer to something, he's going to research and find out what the correct answer is. He's not just going to give you an answer off the cuff. And in fact, many of us have probably told him, if he was ever going to leave the city, let us know, because we'd like to follow him. And he's just that type of, of leader. And I'm sure with his humility, this is just killing him, having everybody come up here and sing his praises, you know, because he is- come up here and sing his praises, you know, because he is just an absolute humble guy. We've worked together on several projects, a lot, you know, in difficult situations, being out at the airport, inspecting airport hangars and other projects. And he works for an effective solution that's not only going to benefit the city, but also help the residents whom we serve. So you've got a true leader here that's a wonderful person in all aspects. And hopefully, he will be the next man for the job. Thank you very much.
I'm going to stand before you, and Jared might kill me for this story. And he's probably thinking, what is Tyler doing up there? I'm Tyler Andrews. I'm in Code Services. So one day, I did an inspection, and Jared found out it may have been a hard situation to be in for one of his employees. I'm just working through the day. All of a sudden, my phone's ringing. I look down. It's Jared Johnson. I start sweating. And I was like, what did I do now? It's Jared calling. He doesn't call me. He calls Chris. He calls someone else. Why is he calling me? And he first apologizes for how late it was in the day for him to call. And I was like, what's the big deal? It's like before lunch, you know? And he apologizes that he was stuck in a meeting, found out about this inspection, was late to the other meeting, because he wanted to talk to me and make sure his employee was okay. Talked to me for a couple of minutes. Later that day, I got an appointment on my calendar from Jared to come meet with him in his office. And I was like, I thought we were good. We had. And I was like, he must have found out about something else. He double-checked, wanted to look me in the eyes and make sure I was okay. And you will hear about how he's a great leader, and he possesses this, and he possesses that. He does. He absolutely does. But he cares for his people, and he cares for his city. That told me right then and there, it didn't matter who was in this Zoom meeting, who was in the meeting in present, he was going to make sure that even his lowly code officer was taken care of. And I hope you take that in consideration.
Again, online, if you want to make a comment, raise your hand, or star six, or star nine, one of those two, we've all got to get you there. And then anybody else in the room here, you're welcome to step up.
Counsel, I'm Mike McBride. I'm an Ogden resident and an Ogden City employee. I work in marketing and communications. It's an honor and a privilege to work with wonderful people like we do in Ogden City. And I think I share that sentiment with a lot of the folks here. And also to have great elected officials, so thank you for that. I've been a vocal and active advocate for Ogden for 20 years. And I take every chance I can to stand up for what's good and right in Ogden. And I want to say that Jared Johnson is good and right for Ogden. He is reliable and responsive. He makes my job difficult sometimes, and sometimes he makes it very easy for me, because I know right up front what the whole story is. And it's never a surprise to me when something's going to come down the media channel. So I do want to say, I hope that you'll consider this nomination for Jared. He is absolutely wonderful to work with. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate those who came up and appreciate the support there. We have this on our agenda next week to... Well, we have this on our agenda to address next week. And at that point in time, any other discussion from the council members or any other comments?
I was just going to mention, but there will be an opportunity for public comment that night also. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And please, also, if you'd like to, you can reach out via phone or email or whatever. And you know, Mayor, you're right, we haven't had a chance to get to know Jared very well. But thank you for everyone who's come to help us get to know Jared better. It's probably great to feel like you're at your own funeral, right, Jared? There I am. That's okay. A few of us have that opportunity, maybe. Okay. All right, up next, we have... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If there's no other further comments or discussion from the council, do we need to make a motion to continue this?
Oh, we do need to make a motion to continue this? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and do that.
I made the assumption that...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll continue it to April 9.
We have a motion to continue this item to April 9 by Councilmember Blair, and a second by Councilmember Chubberka and Hare, both about the same time. We'll give it to Councilmember Chubberka this time. And this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So again, we'll continue this item to the 9th, where we will also continue to hear public input if there's any, and then take action on that. Okay. Now, up next, we'll invite Steve Burton and our policy analyst up to talk to us about the proposed Ogden City flag poll ordinance. So yeah. And as everyone's shuffling out, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Council. This comes to you as a council member initiative. It's regarding city-owned flag polls. This was discussed in a work session, a council work session, on March 19th, just a few weeks ago. The proposed language will add a new section to the city's flag ordinance. And the language states that the United States flag, the Utah State flag, the Ogden City flag can be flown on city-owned flag polls. It also allows the city police and fire flags to be flown on city-owned flag polls. It follows state and federal statute regarding flag display. And it's a very short ordinance. We kind of read through it last week. I don't have it on the screen. We can put it on the screen if you like. But that's what I've got for you. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have one, Steve. Do we know of any other municipalities that have the same or similar ordinance like this or similar language?
I know that, off the top of my head, I know that there are some. I know, for example, I think I was looking at one that Heber City has. I believe there are several others in the area. And yes, yeah, there are several other cities that have a similar ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm curious. I'm not sure if you want to answer maybe the council member that brought forward the initiative. What problem is this trying to solve?
So, I can't speak for the council member, and they may want to speak, but I can state from a policy perspective, the courts have said it's a good idea to have an administrative policy in place so that the city can be clear on what government speech is. So from a policy perspective and from case law that I'm aware of, it's a good idea to establish a flag ordinance or policy to protect the city.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion or comments on this? I don't think so. Okay. Well, at this point, I'd be willing to entertain a motion on this
Chair, I'll make that motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-7.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hare to adopt the proposed ordinance 2024-7, seconded by Councilmember Myers. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chubberka?
No.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
No.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. And that passes. Would you like to comment, those that are in opposition to that or opposed to that?
Sure, I'll go first. Your comment was really pertinent. In my opinion, it's a message type of ordinance, and that it just is trying to solve something that probably doesn't need to be solved. So, thank you.
Agreed. And I think that when we had discussions about this in the work sessions, when we looked over it, I think I understood the purpose behind it. But I also disagree with the fact that this is not political, because I think that was one of the comments that was made, is that we don't want to have the city or certain people, the mayor, other individuals deciding political statements that maybe don't align with other political statements. And I think it's all political. So I disagree that it's not political.
Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on any topic. Please step to the podium and state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. And we do have one online. Let's go ahead and start online, Brandon, if we could.
Hi, Heath Soto, Ogden resident. I really wasn't planning on addressing the flag thing, but it's just weird hearing everyone tap dance around the fact that we all know it's because one council member worried a gay pride flag may go up someday. So I totally agree with Angela and Marcia on this one. Sorry, I'm a little upset that we're doing this right now. What I really wanted to talk about today was, I had a question regarding... I brought up before the fact that we don't post votes by name in the minutes. And the last time I brought it up, nobody said anything. And looking for something else, somebody mentioned to me in the Utah Code in Chapter 4, the Open and Public Meetings Act, in Part 2, under Meetings 54-4-203, there is a part that says, "Written minutes of an open meeting shall include..." And in the list is, "a record by individual member, each vote taken by the public body, and the name of each person." So I'm not a lawyer. I could be reading this wrong, but it sounds like we're not following Utah Code. And if we aren't, we should fix that. And if I'm wrong about that, I still think it would make people feel better if they could easily look up if their council member agrees with them on issues that they care about, rather than having to fast-forward through a video and try to find the votes. That's it. Thanks.
Good evening. Teresa Bramwell again. You know, I've been coming here a lot, and I will keep coming, because I'm very frustrated with Ogden City. Every day, I experience more frustration, and I feel like Ogden City's kind of my enemy. I don't think they're on my side. I don't think anybody wants me to succeed. And that's why I'm here. But today, the most recent frustration, I came to talk to the Licensing Department, the Building Department, to find out if I could put up a lifetime shed on my property, so I can put some of the building materials that I have purchased to rebuild my home that was burned. And the answer to the question is no, I can't do that. In order for me to do that, I have to spend $500, and I have to schedule an appointment a month out with the Planning Commission, and I have to go plead my case to the Planning Commission to tell them why I need to put up a temporary shed that's not even attached to my property, because it's made out of plastic, and you go boom, there it is. And then when you're done with it, you pick it up and you take it to the next place, because it's not even attached to the property. But for some reason, the zoning that my house is in, that's always been a house since 1912, it's in some sort of bizarre neighborhood commercial zoning, where the only thing it can be is a church or a beauty salon. How many churches and how many beauty salons does Ogden City need in one city block? Because the whole block is zoned that. Do you need 55 churches right next to each other? Do you need 25 beauty salons right next to each other in the same block? What's the point of this zoning, other than to just harass your residents and piss them off, because then they can't do anything? And they have to go get special permission and pay money, lots of money, to go get special permission to do any little dumb $50 thing on their property. I'm just frustrated, and I'm tired of it. And I wish everything were easier in Ogden City, and it's not, and it continues to not be. The zoning needs to be changed. The zoning doesn't make sense for anybody, any of the residents that are there, anybody that does anything. There's almost nobody that even conforms to the zoning. So why do we have it? Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. We have online?
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I hope everybody got outside for a moment today, because it feels like the first day of spring, even though it's not truly the first day of spring. I too am disturbed about the flag ordinance, and I support Councilmember White and Councilmember Chubberka, that this is fixing a problem that doesn't really exist, and it is a silencing ordinance. And I just really wish that that whole thing didn't happen. Speaking of code, I too share Dave, Commissioner Graff's comments about the design concerns on Union Walk at 14425th Street. And I know you all have heard lots of citizen pushback against it. And while, yes, the height isn't necessarily the problem, it's the massing with the pushback on the upper levels. And generally speaking, when a building permit expires, the applicant must reapply. Also, they're impacted if the code changes between the time that their permit expires and they don't have one. And that would be a perfect time to really talk to folks and find out how they feel about it. I personally don't have a problem with the height, but I also know some people that approve that on landmarks, that the rendering didn't accurately reflect the mass at the top. And I think everybody would be happy if the top part of it were pushed back another eight feet, so that the mass was not so bad on the street level. And the other thing that deeply concerns me at this point is a three-day AI seminar that I took from one of the nation's leading experts, as well as a couple of other certificate classes. And as far as I know, and I haven't heard any discussion about it, because I haven't missed a meeting, we don't have an AI policy. missed a meeting, we don't have an AI policy. And this leaves the city up to massive legal exposure and then there's really great sides to this. It could be an incredible productivity tool for the staff, but the staff can't use it if you don't have a policy. It would infinitely improve the lives of constituents and offer better services. The code challenges that Teresa's talking about can be automated and help the planning department run faster and more efficiently with the integration of generative AI. So I highly recommend that you, as the council, start looking into that. The state has already enacted a policy and so are many other states and big cities across the nation and we really need to get on board with it because it is the future and it is coming and it's here and we should learn how to use it to help our employees and help our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Any other comments here in the body? Okay. I don't know as far as some of the questions that were asked, if we have some, if there's any answers on, on that with the, maybe starting with the Public Meeting Act, if that's, are we, I don't know if Gary, if you have any, as far, I think we've talked about this in the past that, but yeah, if you want to make any comment, sorry.
What is the particular question?
Just the record of votes within the?
Oh, why don't we let Tracy talk about?
Oh, let's Tracy.
She actually keeps these records, I believe that she does keep those votes.
We do. The minutes do contain a specific vote by council member. The official minutes do. Your marketing communications group posts results pages the next day after a council meeting, which says if a vote passed or a ordinance was passed or not. I think that might be what is being referred to because it only lists whether it passed or not.
Right.
Seven to zero. Those are, that is not the official minutes. The official minutes are then posted after you approve them and they do contain individual votes.
Okay. And so those official, so after the official minutes are approved, they're available on our website?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Great. I don't know if there's a question about the zoning issue with the shed? If that's, do we have any idea on that?
So, I hadn't heard about the shed. I think it happened just before or even during the work session. So if you, would it be okay if we took all the time to unpack that one and maybe get back to you next week?
That's fine.
I did notice that Krista May walked out with her, I think, in hopes of connecting with her. Yeah, I think we've, I think we've got some options in slip there. Thanks for helping with the minutes one, Tracy. I have been, I've been a little reticent sometimes to give answers because I don't want to guess on anything and I don't want to be uncertain. So sometimes I'm a little.
Sure.
Extra careful. But last week, there was a question about how interest funds are being used for the Marshall White project. And that's a thing that we do, you, we issue a bond, it comes in a big lump sum, we put it in the bank, we accrue interest and apply it back toward the project. So I have talked with Public Services on how we're using that, but since Justin Anderson's here, Director of Public Services, I just would ask him to give the same answer that I got so that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if you'd like to come up and share that, yeah. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you, Chair Ritchie and members of the council. So, yeah, so the interest on the Marshall White bond, if I remember right, that amount is approximately $1 million and I believe that's coming to you next week, if that's correct. So the budget.
The budget, I mean.
Yeah. And so what we are proposing to do with that is we want to do some additional fencing improvements, some additional lighting and also deal with some unsuitable soils that was greater than what the geotechnical report referenced. So we have more unsuitable soils that needed to be dug out and removed from the site than what, what we thought originally. So those are the, the three components that we were proposing to use the additional bond money for.
Perfect. And I think, I think maybe the concern was that that interest income didn't just automatically inflate the cost of the building project, it was something that we would have to approve and based on the recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, any, is that?
Can I just say, the question's off topic, but when can we go on like a site tour of the site?
Oh, yeah.
Well, whenever, whenever you want to.
And when is a good time, I guess.
You know what, right now, it is a little muddy.
It's a little muddy out there.
Whenever it's a good time, I would love to go check it out.
But, yeah, we, we'd love to get it dried out and we'll take you on site, we'll put you in a hard hat and some PPE and we'll go around and look at what's going on.
I'd love that.
We'll, we'll look at that as a council leadership and see if we can schedule that in a few weeks once we dry out a little bit. That'd be great.
Fantastic. We watch one of our projects.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Justin, the other question I have is some of the interest from those bonds could also be used for projects that come up, improvements that need to be made that were not part of the original bid on the property, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Because there always are some overrides or some over.
Runs, well, and that's one of the things we're doing with the unsuitable soils. There was, it was greater than what we'd originally thought, but yeah, there's some landscaping, there's, there's other site improvements that we could look to even do inside if, if we have excess funds available.
And it could also go to debt service, correct?
I would defer to.
Principal. Principal debt service, yeah. Okay. Just specifically, yes. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
And I think the one other question was, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, on the 25th Street building, that permit's still active, correct? It hasn't expired? I don't, I think that's my, was my understanding, but Mayor, do you want?
Yes, is that right? I mean, essentially, there's a, there's a project that's been approved. It wasn't built the right way, so it came down, but there's still an approval that's there to some degree. It's, I don't know, it's a bunch of technical legal jargon, but that's my understanding. Anything to add?
Let me tell you a little bit of an update on that. We are talking with the developers. And, and we're working out the things that were a problem with it last time, including some design elements. And there will be a new building permit. It won't go through all the different, different approvals of planning commission and historic issues because all those will be consistent with those prior decisions. And so we, we think the building will, will be built without the design defects and without the, with some corrections to some exterior treatments that were needed to be corrected. So it hasn't been resolved yet, but it's on track.
Thank you. Okay, with that, comments from Mayor.
Thanks. Just want to thank all the employees that came to speak on Jared's behalf, thank the public for their comments as well, and thank the council for the opportunities we've had to talk. And it's been good, it's been a good, good process to engage with you guys and give this some time and give each other, give one another opportunity to be heard. So I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank Justin Anderson for deferring to Lisa so quickly. Did you guys see how quick his head turned to Lisa? That's how you know you got a smart man on your team. Nothing else to add, but just, I just really appreciate the journey that we're on. I know it isn't easy. It's definitely a journey and that a journey requires growth. It requires that we give each other a chance and just want to let you guys know that you have that for me and I appreciate you guys giving me that as well.
Thank you. Comments from council members?
I just want to say thanks for coming and that there's still some time and opportunity if you want to email, if there's anybody that wants to email us or call us. I've heard quite a few people, so.
Yeah. Ready for a move? I was just going to say, just real quickly, I do appreciate the comments that we received here tonight as well as over the email and really impressed at the breadth of the communication coming from, you know, employees, from a former employer of Jared, the airport community. There's just, it's, it's quite broad, so that, that to me is impressive. And so I look forward to any more communication we have on that in our meeting next week. So with that, I would entertain a motion to, up next, to consider journeying into a closed session.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Blair, to go into a closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. That passes. So this is the last you'll see of us tonight. We'll adjourn from the closed session within the closed session and adjourn from this meeting next session as well. Thanks for being here.